The June 12, 2018 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Buckley?
Present.
Ms. Jisling?
Present.
Mrs. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Tuttle?
Here.
Mrs. Breyer?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would like to welcome everyone to the June 12, 2018 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can also access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Spectrum Cable, Channel 1026 in Mentor and Channel 1025 in Mentor-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV, Mentor, Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. And next, we will have approval of minutes for our May 8 Special Meeting and May 8 Regular Meeting, May 22, May 30, and June 2 Special Meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Breyer?
Yes. Next, we'll have hearing of the public on agenda items only. Saying none. We'll have superintendent's report and recommendations. Mr. Porter.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President and members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of Items 5A1 through 5A3.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Breyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Tonight, we are pleased to recognize our Career Tech students who have competed at the state and national levels. Mr. Crowe, along with Ms. Jisling, will present the students with their certificates.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson, I'm excited to be here this evening to recognize the accomplishments of our students in our Career Tech programs. Our Career Tech programs are highly active in career technical student organizations, better known as CTSOs, as a way to engage our students in program content in a fun and competitive way. This year, the Career Tech Department had a very successful year. At this time, I would like to introduce our students and their teachers. First, we're going to introduce our DECA students. So, I don't believe Mrs. Tuzey and or Mr. McKnight are here, but if they are, they can join me on the front. Students in our MBA program compete in the CTSO-DECA, a national organization for marketing and business programs. Students competed in a regional competition at Tri-C and advanced to the state competition. And through the state competition, we had five students that advanced to the national competition that was held in Atlanta, Georgia this past April. So, students, as I say your name, please come up to the front. Stephen Baird, state qualifier. Gianna Baroni, state and national qualifier. Chalechi Bisa, state qualifier. Haley Bryan, state qualifier. Anna Kondrick, state qualifier. Corey Friedrich, state and national qualifier. Mallory Gifford, state and national qualifier. Aleah Goodson, state qualifier. Gabe Grigorescu, state qualifier. Alexxix Hennig, state qualifier. Amari Holden, state qualifier. David Kramer, state qualifier. Dylan Marne, state qualifier. Sophie Martin, state qualifier. Shayna McLaughlin, state qualifier. Nick Morehouse, state qualifier. Paula Ortiz, state qualifier. Sarah Peterson, state and national qualifier. Christian Poindexter Shields, state qualifier. Josh Prainer, state qualifier. Lauren Salo, state qualifier. O'Shea Savander, state and national qualifier. Thomas Shehan, state qualifier. Haley Smith, state qualifier. Caitlin Spiesman, state qualifier. Also, Paula Ortiz coming up. Jamaya Suber, state qualifier. Melanie Tennant, state qualifier. Brianna Webster, state qualifier. And Jalen Williams, state qualifier. State qualifier. You're welcome. Congratulations to all our DECA state and national qualifiers. Next up is our SkillsUSA CTSO group. And I know we have Mr. Lynch in attendance today. So, Mr. Lynch, Mr. Mark Lynch.
The other Lynch.
And if we have any other CTS, or any of our other Career Tech teachers here, but I don't think so tonight. SkillsUSA is a career technical student organization serving students in high school and college, post-secondary, and industrial engineering and health career training programs in Ohio, nationwide and its international. With the following students, please join us in the front. Miranda Atkins, state and national qualifier. Joseph Aliberti, state qualifier. Clay Bohovic, state qualifier. Joseph Demener, state qualifier. Matthew Fredo, state qualifier. Reese Gamble, state qualifier. Nick Garlici, state qualifier. Austin Nadd, state qualifier. Dagan Gronstein, state qualifier. Rebecca Yuhas, state qualifier. Anna Kettlewood, state qualifier. Ernest Landy, state qualifier. Lilian Maziki, Mazika. Paige McCoy. Zach McWilliams. Charlotte Merritt. Daniel Novak. Brooke Parkinson. Joe Renshaw. Victoria Ritt. Zach Saunders. Annabelle Skiby. Chad Smith. Emma Spleet. Ally Stefanic. Matea Turick. Harley Viney. I skipped over two. Nick and Ally were also national qualifiers. And finally, Cassidy Way. Congratulations to all our SkillsUSA state and national qualifiers. And our final CTSO for the evening is our students that are in our Allied Health Program. This is only our first year for Allied Health Program, and nearly a quarter of our students qualified for the HOSA state competition, which speaks to their hard work and dedication. HOSA is an international student organization recognized by the U.S. Department of Education and the Health Science Education Division of ACTE. HOSA's twofold mission is to promote career opportunities in the healthcare industry and to enhance the delivery of quality healthcare to all people. And we had three of our students that qualified for the state competition. Alyssa Butler, Jamaya Henry, and Caitlin Minow. I don't believe any of them were able to make it this evening, but congratulations to all of them.
Jason, before you sit down, I'd like to congratulate you. I'm so excited over the years how this program has grown and demonstrated by all the students and the students who didn't come. I mean, all those names, it's fantastic. Thank you so much. And congratulations to all the students once again. Thank you.
Madam President and members of the board, three weeks ago, we celebrated the graduation of our high school seniors. Tonight, we celebrate a different kind of graduation, that of our 2017, 2018 retirees. It is with mixed emotions that we recognize our retiring faculty and staff. We thank them for their many years of dedicated service and wish them good health and happiness in their retirement. Mrs. Burnett and Mr. Tuttle are going to join me. As I call your name, please come forward. And I would ask after you shake the board members' hands if you would please remain up front on that side until all of the names have been called. We want to capture all of you together here. First, from the certified side, Judy Fry, if you're here, if you would come forward. Judy, not here this evening, began her career with Mentor Schools in 1985 and spent her entire career as an elementary teacher at Orchard Hollow. Judy is retiring after 33 teaching years with Mentor Public Schools. Is Chris Miller here this evening? Mr. Miller began his career with Mentor Public Schools in 1975 and recently retired as an intervention specialist at Shore Middle Schools. Chris is retiring after spending 43 years of teaching in the district. From the classified side, Anne Brown. Anne began her career as an educational assistant in 1991 at Fairfax Elementary. Anne is retiring after 29 years with the district, spending most of her career at Mentor High School as an account clerk. Mary Lou Brannon. Mary Lou started her career with Mentor Public Schools in 1991, working as a classroom assistant. Over the years, she has spent time assisting in our classrooms and also in our offices. Mary Lou has spent the last 13 years at Mentor High School with a total of 28 years with the district. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. I'll miss your voice when I call my kids off.
Judy Cianciola. Judy, not able to join us this evening, began her career in 1991 in our School Nutrition Services Department at Mentor High School. Recently, Judy has been at Ridge Middle Schools as the middle school manager, and she is retiring after 27 years with the district's School Nutrition Services Department. Congratulations to Judy. Linda Dragovich, who I don't believe was able to join us this evening. Linda spent time in the School Nutrition Services Department also, and most recently has been a student supervisor at Mentor High School since 2006. Linda is retiring after 12 years as a student supervisor at Mentor High School. Steve Ebert. Steve began his career with Mentor Public Schools in 1989 and recently retired as the custodian three at Memorial Middle School. Steve celebrates 29 years of employment with Mentor Schools as a custodian in our district. Congratulations to Steve. Paul Granger. Paul began his full-time employment with Mentor Schools in 1982 as a custodian at Mentor High School. Prior to retirement, Paul was the head custodian at Sterling Morton Elementary, and he is retiring with 35 years of service as a custodian with our district. James Huey. Jim has been with the district since 2003 as a bus operator in the Transportation Department. Jim is retiring with 15 years as a bus operator with Mentor Public Schools. David has been with Mentor Public Schools since 2007 and as a bus operator in the Transportation Department. David is retiring after 11 years as a bus operator for our district. Don Perry. Don has been with the Mentor Public Schools since 2006 as a bus operator in the Transportation Department. Don retired after 12 years as a school bus operator. Debbie has been with the Mentor Public Schools since 1991 in the School Nutrition Services Department at Memorial Junior High and, more recently, has been at Sterling Morton Elementary as a satellite server. Debbie is retiring after 30 years with the district's School Nutrition Services Department.
She was snubbing us.
Thank you for all you've done.
I think we're going to get a picture, and if we could give one final round of applause to our retirees. Please remember, once a cardinal, always a cardinal. Thank you.
We're going to take a short break. If anyone would like to leave, they can do so now. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like to. About five minutes. All right, we're going to go ahead and resume the meeting. Thank you.
From Lake Road in Mentor-on-the-Lake over to Derail, which is across from Pine Gate.
Madam President, Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wilson, on May 22, we held a special board meeting to provide an extensive update about our strategic plan work this year as a district. Tonight, I would like to share at least this quick overview as part of our regular board Strategic Planning 2018. A need for strategic planning existed as our last strategic plan revision occurred back in 2012. This update provides a three-to-five-year roadmap for the big initiatives we want to remain focused on as a district for the next three to five years. To begin, we gathered about 80 willing participants, including you as board members, administrators, teachers and other certified staff members, classified staff members, business leaders, community members, and that includes many parents. We formed four task forces and held regular meetings throughout the year, at least once a month for each area, and sometimes even much more frequently than that. It included a revision of our mission and vision, which becomes part of a first reading tonight for an updated policy. And with the task forces, we developed targeted goals and strategies, which will be supported by action steps to ensure its implementation. You can see our new mission statement, inspiring students today to reach their potential tomorrow, which underscores the importance of what we are doing today as being absolute key to the futures of our students. And then our four key areas, that became our task, they ended up becoming our task forces essentially. Together, we will ensure a safe learning environment for our students, because safety is our number-one priority. Provide a balanced, well, high-quality education, because that is, that's the reason we're in business here. That's what we're about. That's what we do. Maximize district resources. As you know, we couldn't do any of this without having resources at our disposal. And encouraging strong community partnerships. And I like to think of the old adage, "It takes a village to raise a child." We know we're much stronger when our community partnerships are strong. So, these four things become sort of our key areas for our strategic plan. Along with that, our slogan, which we've actually begun using for the past few years, captures the ABCs that we believe in. These words actually define us very well in recent years. I would even say it's part of what uniquely defines us: adapting, balancing, collaborating. This chart here depicts our four important vision statements in more of a visual way. It also reminds me, these four areas do not operate in a vacuum. They all intersect with each other in different ways all of the time. And from this, I do want to briefly mention the goals of each of our areas specifically. Going to our safety vision statement, "Together, we will ensure a safe learning environment." First important safety goal that the safety task force came up with, collaborate with stakeholders to incorporate best practices to prevent, identify, support, and respond to behavioral health challenges, creating optimal learning environments. Our task force for safety, made up of so many strong individuals, acknowledged how critical the mental health piece is. And so many of their strategies focused on this, on early intervention, as we go forward with this particular goal. Goal number two, provide standardized and adaptive processes for crisis intervention, crisis prevention, response, and recovery to ensure the social, emotional, and physical safety of all of our stakeholders. This goal ensures strength for us in the event of a crisis, strengthening all timetables of a crisis, the before, the during, and the after. All three critically important. Third goal, provide clear and concise information to essential stakeholders during all stages of a crisis. The strategies under this goal will continue to ensure that the best communication possible occurs during a crisis. It's one of those things we can always get better with our communication. So, that in a nutshell would be our safety goals. Education vision statement, "Together, we will provide a balanced, high-quality education." Our first education goal, engage students in a comprehensive curriculum that is relevant and responsive to their evolving needs. The word engage in this particular goal is key. Students cannot excel as just bystanders or memorizers today. They have to be actively engaged with their learning, and it's our obligation to make sure they are. Second goal, providing balanced, research-based instruction that inspires and positions students to achieve their full potential. This helps us to prepare students the best way possible, and we have to, again, we're obligated to use the best strategies and research we know how. And goal three, to ensure students' abilities to be self-directed, confident, and adaptable in order to reach their goals. This makes sure students have ownership for their learning. That doesn't absolve us from our responsibilities to educate, but it requires us to help them achieve their own agency and their own empowerment in the learning that they undertake. Now, we go on to our resources vision statement. Together, we will maximize the district's resources. As we look at our first goal, maintain and enhance fiscal stability by focusing attention and diligence on short- and long-term financial planning. This one's an absolute non-negotiable. We are required, actually by law, to pay attention to financial planning in both short- and long-term timelines, which we will continue to do. We've done that successfully. We will continue to do that. Two, we'll explore options for alternative revenue to maximize existing personnel, facilities, and resources. This goal in particular speaks to continuing the creativity, which will help us to generate revenue well into the future. Goal three, ensuring a continued and balanced approach toward an equitable distribution of resources to maximize opportunities across the district. We want students at all levels, in all different corners of the district, with different needs to have access to everything that we offer, so that equity piece, that fairness piece is very important in goal three. And goal four, invest in traditional and alternative means that prioritize physical, emotional, and social safety, allowing growth for all stakeholders. This goal is specially designed to make sure safety remains our top priority. And finally, our fourth task force area, the community vision statement. Together, we will encourage strong community partnerships. And three goals emerged out of the Community Partnerships Task Force. First, to nurture and cultivate a well-connected community. We are connected to so many outstanding partners now, and we certainly cherish those relationships. But great relationships need to be nurtured too, now and in the future. And that includes with those stakeholders that we already have strong relationships with, as well as building relationships with new stakeholders, you know, in addition. Second, maximize and engage community through effective and consistent communication. Our communication cannot just be frequent, but we'll continue to look for ways to reach the most people the best way we can. As you know, formats, communication formats have expanded over the last, just over the last five, 10 years extensively. We'll continue to use the best possible format to communicate our information as a district. And third, we need to amplify our brand, so it resonates what makes us uniquely Mentor Public Schools. Our communication, or finally, the 80 community members recognized we have something special here in Mentor, but we need to spread that excitement to, again, share with as many as possible what many as possible what makes us uniquely Mentor. So as we wrap up, just some thank yous I would like to offer. And there is a lot of work ahead of us, there's no doubt about that. We want to make sure we implement the steps to achieve these goals. But this foundational work this past year from all of these task forces has been incredibly valuable. I would like to thank the Board for its support of this plan, the administrative team for your leadership in this complex process, and the members of our strategic plan committee, who attended countless meetings throughout the year and shared so many outstanding ideas with us. So thank you to all. Any questions?
Thank you for leading this.
You're welcome.
Good job.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the Board, we have two first readings on the agenda. Because this is a first reading, no vote is necessary. I am recommending approval of the following new revised, new revised and replacement policies. Policy 1.07, 3.09, 3.19, 6.18, 6.37, 7.04, 7.13, 7.27, 8.01, 8.16, 9.16, and 9.21. I do realize there are some questions that have arisen regarding policy 3.19. Mrs. Jisling?
Yes, I wanted to propose that we might postpone consideration of 3.19 until we have an opportunity to get a little bit more information about the specifics of how teacher-created materials, for example, or other collaborative efforts may or may not be impacted by this policy. So I was hoping we could look at this a little further and then vote on it next month.
Question. Jenny, have you had discussion with Bill about this?
I have. So there was, there were some avenues that we can explore, and just because this is kind of a newer area.
Okay.
It's not brand-new, but Mr. Wilson said, more or less within the last ten years, this has more, begun to evolve. And so exploring it just a little deeper, so that there's clarity. I think anytime that an ownership issue is in question, that it's important that all players would understand exactly how that's impacted. It may not be something that's a problem, I just don't want to see it become a problem because we weren't clear.
Just to add to Ms. Jisling's comments, I did reach out to Menter Teachers Association. You know, they did indicate that while this is not an immediate concern in the district here, they, they recognize there is some concern regionally about this policy, you know, as other districts are adopting it as well and statewide. So they, you know, they would actually welcome some more discussion within their Menter Teachers Association about it.
So if we could just pull that one out, maybe set that aside for later this summer, and then go ahead and we can vote on the others.
While we're discussing it, can we look more closely at maybe some language that speaks to work that teachers do outside the contract day? Do we want to take ownership for that? I don't know, but that wasn't spoken to in that policy.
No, it, it doesn't address that, or if somebody was pursuing an advanced degree. I mean, there's a lot of circumstances that I could imagine where there, this is a person who's our employee, and there could be impact of their experiences working for the district. But is it our property, then? I think a clarification just makes sense.
Any other comments?
Do we have, can we remove that particular one from our voting list? Then we can go ahead and vote on the other policies that are ready for approval, and then we'll just postpone that until we've got the additional information, if that would be okay?
Does everyone agree that we should table this item?
It sounds like we've got some questions.
Yeah.
If we're in agreement, we can pull that item out and table it, is that correct, Mr. Porter?
Yes, I would, I would recommend, I would retract 3.19 from the list of policies, and I would recommend approval of all of the other policies except 3.19.
Are we okay with that, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, what we're actually doing is withdrawing the recommendation on 3.19 rather than tabling, so it's back off the table still as a second reading until brought forth to the Board again.
So the next time it's presented as a first reading, is that correct?
Well, to be presented as a second reading with perhaps changes or revisions, the Board at that time could again ask for additional changes to it. It's not required to be adopted on a second reading, it can be held back again.
Any other questions or comments? All right, then I'll entertain a motion for approving the other policies minus 3.19.
So moved?
Second.
Please call the rule.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Breyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam President and members of the Board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Items C1 related to Certified Staff, C2 through C4, all related to human resource matters, including D, E, and F.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the rule.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Breyer?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite Mrs. Burnett up to introduce some of our new administrators.
Madam President, members of the Board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson. This evening, I am very proud to introduce to you two of our new administrative hires with Mentor Public Schools for the 2018-19 school year. We truly believe we have found the best candidate for each position, and we are proud to have each individual as part of our administrative team. I would first like to introduce Lori Hoynes. Lori graduated from Ohio University with her bachelor's degree, where she, where her major was in Child and Family Studies with a minor in Psychology. Soon after, she received her Master's of Education from Notre Dame College and received her first teaching license as an intervention specialist. From 2002 to 2004, Lori spent time at Memorial Junior High School as an intervention specialist, as well as acting, from there, was an intervention specialist and an instructional coach for Willoughby Eastlake Schools at South High School and Washington Elementary. In 2013, Lori received her administrative license from Ashland University, where she has been the principal at Grant Elementary in Willoughby Eastlake. Lori resides in Mentor with her husband Ed and her two children Riley and JJ. Lori will be joining the Lake staff as the Lake Elementary Principal for the 18-19 school year. Welcome to Mentor.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson. I want to thank you so much for this opportunity to serve as the Lake Elementary Principal. As a Menter graduate and current community member, I just have so much pride in this district. I was fortunate enough to begin my career here in Menter, and I'm so excited to be back, to be back, to continue the work that's very successful here in Menter. I'm committed to providing the students, the staff, the community members, just an excellent educational opportunity, and I just want to thank you again for this opportunity. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to bring up Jason Crow, who now has on a flower. Jason is not new to the administrative team in Mentor, but he is eager and excited to begin his new administrative position as the Mentor High School Principal for the 18-19 school year. Jason graduated with his bachelor's degree from Cleveland State University in 2006, beginning his teaching career that year at New River Middle School in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Jason returned back to Mentor and taught at Shore Junior High School and Mentor High School while also coaching basketball at the middle school and high school level for many years. In 2009, Jason obtained his administrative degree from Cleveland State University and soon began completing long-term assignments, administrative assignments in the district at Mentor High School, then joining Memorial Middle School as the Assistant Principal. Soon after, he was selected for the Coordinator of Career Technical Education for the past five years, and Jason currently oversees the Lake Shore Compact for Mentor, Euclid, and Wickliffe. Jason currently resides in Mentor with his wife Dana and their two children Declan and Sienna. Welcome to Mentor High School officially.
Madam President, members of the Board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson, first of all, thank you. I have had the great fortune to be a member of Menter Public Schools in a variety of ways. As a student, summer custodian, teacher, coach, assistant principal at the high school and middle school, career tech coordinator, and now I have the opportunity to be the next principal at Menter High School. Menter High School has a rich tradition of excellence both in and out of the classroom. I believe our mission is to provide an outstanding educational experience for our students that not just prepares them for the future, but gives them a competitive advantage. I truly believe the real measure of our success is not what happens within our walls, but by what happens afterwards, when our students leave and the impact they have on society. This school system and community has given me and my family so much, and I look forward to being able to give back as the principal of Menter High School.
I just have to tell you that my son, who just finished his junior year in our career tech construction management program, just finished rehabbing his uncle's two bathrooms. So talk about putting those skills to work, and he got paid, what do you know? Thank you, Menter Schools and Career Tech.
Thank you. This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda.
Can I please have Sarah Peterson join me at the podium? The school board is very pleased to be able to give two scholarships this year from our school board fund, and one of those recipients is Sarah Peterson. The other unfortunately was not be able to be here tonight, but I would like to read a brief synopsis of what qualified her and her attributes. But I'm going to start with Sarah. Thank you for coming tonight. So Sarah has been involved with the Lake Metro Park's Environmental Learning Center for the past five years as an active camper, member, and volunteer. One of her key qualities is her instant befriending of all people. She makes sure she connects with campers and students who may not be fitting in, so they don't feel left out. As a nature lover while at Menter High School, she has been actively involved in ecology club with the goal of serving, trying to make a difference, and making the world a little greener. Sarah found her niche during her junior and senior years at Menter High School through the CTE Marketing and Business Administration Program. While in this program, she gained confidence, learned business skills, and the importance of teamwork and problem-solving. She is a member of the DECA Distributive, Distributed, Distributive Education Clubs of America, and through her CTE Marketing and Business Program, and placed third in a state competition this year in the category Hospitality Services Team Decision-Making, then went on to be a finalist at the DECA International Competition. As a result of participating in the two-year CTE program, Sarah discovered her life goal is to go to college and obtain a degree in Business Administration and Human Resource Management. It's important to her that she is able to give back and worth, work with communities and offer her services to enrich the lives of others in our community. She is very proud of the fact that she will be the first in her family to attend college. Sarah is a kind, compassionate, determined, optimistic, intelligent young lady. She will attend Kent State University in the fall, is that correct? And on behalf of the Board of Education, I'm pleased to present the scholarship to Our second scholarship recipient unfortunately was not able to be here tonight. As you could see earlier, a lot of our students are very busy and getting ready for college and different things, so. But just wanted to announce that second scholarship recipient is April Lynn Gable. And April has been active in her church, including helping with Vacation Bible School. She has also taught her love of baton twirling to young twirlers. At Menter High School, she's a member of the Speech and Debate Team, where she has been team captain her junior and senior year, which has enabled her to speak at various public events in and outside the Menter community, allowing her to discuss topics she's passionate about at a higher level and open the door for her to discover her true self. In addition, she twirled baton with the Fighting Cardinal Marching Band as a Menter majorette and was named Miss High School Twirler of the Year for 2017. In addition to her rigorous curriculum of honors and AP classes at Menter High, she's been active in student government, where she was elected student body president, Future Leaders of America, and Homecoming Queen, just to mention a few. In reading April's many accomplishments and recommendations, it's clear she is passionate, vibrant, motivated, a team player, committed, and driven to succeed. April plans to attend University of Cincinnati, where she will continue to twirl baton and study political science and public administration, with aspirations to run for U.S. President in 2052. I am honored to present the scholarship to her, which we will put in the mail. So congratulations to both of our members. And Mrs. Breyer, I have heard from April that when she is elected president, she will have the Fighting Cardinal Marching Band in her parade. That is excellent. Thank you. All right, next item, approval of resolution to authorize disposal of board property, private sale. Mr. Wilson, did you have something?
Yes, as the Board knows, we have now every year purchased a home as a learning laboratory for our career tech program, and at the end of the renovation, sell the home to fund the purchase of the next home. Ohio law requires that the first step is to conduct a public auction to sell the property, and in our case, we were not successful, there were no bids received. We're now asking for authority to proceed the private sale and authorizing me to engage a realtor and place the home on market and work with the superintendent on the terms and conditions, which will be brought back to the Board for final action.
So moved.
Second?
Please call the rule.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Breyer?
Yes.
Any discussion on the?
Yeah, on the next item, the Kirtland Board of Education has asked the Board to renew the agreement to provide food service, management, and operations to the Kirtland Local School District. The, before you, is a request for a new two-year agreement to begin with the 18-19 year that will generate as much as $32,500 in management fees to the school district, in addition to reimbursement for all actual costs. The program's been very successful. Our team here, led by Jenny Lang, was able to eliminate what at one time was an $86,000 annual operating deficit, and they're operating in the black now, and, most importantly, significant increase in student participation and healthy meals.
Discussion?
Did you have comments?
So we operate in the black, what do we do with that money, operating in the black? What fund does that go into?
Well, the operating in the black... Well, the operating in the black is at Kirtland. What we receive is reimbursement for all of our out-of-pocket expense and the management fee. The management fee goes into our business sales, our management fund to offset costs that we have and to promote future opportunities to provide services where we have excess capacity.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Motion?
So moved.
Second? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
Moving on to the legislative report.
I just want to call attention to a couple of the items on there. House Bill 609 introduced by Representative Hughes to authorize student expulsions for communicating a threat of violence to occur on school grounds. And then on page two, at the, not quite the end, House Bill 693, and this, in all of this, I'm not saying this is the most interesting one, but you may find this interesting, those of you in the audience and the board members as well. House Bill 693 introduced by Rep. Young, Leroy Township, to require certification to carry a firearm into a school safety zone and to grant an income tax credit for school employees or contractors who have such certifications. Open for comment, or just, I wanted to provide that, make sure you were aware of something like that is moving through the House at this time?
I'm glad that we made a statement in April, I believe it was, taking a very firm position regarding firearms in our schools and having staff members carrying guns. And so, are we sending maybe a formal letter to Representative Young?
We certainly can. Prepare a resolution and send a letter to more than Representative Young, to all the reps.
Who's this representative?
Ron Young, our state representative for our area here.
And it's regarding contractors, allowing contractors?
Employees or contractors. And you have to have a certification. Now, what that certification is, I looked this up in a brief summary, and I couldn't find what that certification is in the process, so.
I can't imagine us being interested in having any employee or contractor on our premises with a gun for any reason.
I'd be happy to draft up a letter for Mr. Tuttle as our legislative liaison to forward on behalf of the Board of Education. I'll do a little more research and get some more to do.
Greatly appreciate that, Dan. Thank you.
Thanks for looking into that too, Mr. Tuttle. And thank you, Mr. Wilson. Especially since we've already taken a very clear position.
We did make a, we did take a position in the spring that, you know, we were not in favor of employees having guns.
I certainly wouldn't want any contractors on our premises, anybody.
I would love to know what the reasoning behind that is. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to Chief Financial Officer's report and recommendations, Mr. Wilson.
Yes, I recommend approval of Items 7A through 7E, the monthly transactions, including the financial statements which reflect we're cracking to our historic norm through the fiscal year now with 11 months complete. Pleased to report that our investment program continues to benefit by increasing interest rates as well as the change of almost a year ago for our investment advisors, and we're significantly outperforming our budget estimate.
Questions?
Not specifically, but I just do want to thank Mr. Wilson and Mr. Porter for that special session that we had, where we did the thorough deep dive into the finances. I think for Mr. Buckley and myself, being new, it was just phenomenal to go through everything that we did on that day. And I've been through meetings that were six hours like that, where I've wanted to just go to sleep, and this was, it wasn't, it was so intriguing and interesting that we felt like it went in two minutes. It was just really good, and I appreciate the way that you can explain it to, in layman's terms.
Good, thank you.
It was, and I know you love talking about it.
Yes, I do.
We found out that Mr. Wilson and Mr. Porter are good teachers.
Excellent teachers, yes. Thank you for bringing that up. I think it was good for the new board members and for those of us that have been here for a while to revisit on a Saturday for six hours, so, yeah. No, it was good. It's good to revisit that stuff from time to time.
Well worth our time, there's no doubt about it.
All good information. Thanks you.
Helps us to ask better questions.
Yep. Always good to revisit. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
I just wanted to say a thank you to Director Mrs. Cheryl Ponin and the whole staff. I think the library functions as an especially valued partner in our community. They're always looking to expand, fine-tune services to meet the needs and interests of people from lapset programs for toddlers all the way to seniors. And they have such robust programming, and they've now become our partner here at Mentor High School with the hub, and we're just working out the details of that agreement. I'm so proud of how that partnership has evolved, and I think it gives our community a very valuable service.
Well, and I think Cheryl's really provided a very open climate.
Very much so.
I was going to wait until new business, but if I may, I'd like to expand upon that. As I informed the board, I was invited to the Library Trustees Steering Committee meeting last week to refine the last nuances of our agreement for them to have access and operate library programs at the hub, and we're very excited to say that we've reached consensus. I've reviewed it with Bill, and we're comfortable the minor revisions are well within the context that the board's comfortable with. It's my understanding that Library Trustees will take formal action next week. I indicated that it would be presented to the board at the July meeting. They're anxious to begin their hiring process, which is a very long process, as I'm told, to ensure they have staffing for the start of the school year. And I would comment, as you saw in Bill's presentation earlier tonight, the sense of community and connection to community, both in feedback I'm getting around the state and Cheryl has shared with me from her circles with the public library world, this is a very unique partnership, but one that will become a model for many people, recognizing we serve the same community, and the community has funded the hub and as well as the library, and the ability to expand the access to our community is something I think we'll see grow around the state based on what we're doing here in Mentor. So we will have a formal agreement to you next week, and it's very, very similar to the one you've previously seen.
I think it's exciting because people might ask, well, if we have the regular library, why would we need services at the high school? And the simple answer is that there are some unique facilities, equipment and tools that people can use, students can use after hours, and again, that's money that's come to us or dollars from our taxpayers or state dollars, and it's nice to be able to share that with the larger community, so, thank you.
And just another location, too.
And it just fits perfectly in with the strategic plan with our community partnerships.
Yeah.
I love to get the people into our schools to see what we have. If you're not, it's so hard for people, not hard, but a lot of people that, when you don't have children in the schools, you don't know how fantastic it really is here and everything that we offer, and it's just another way to do it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Unfinished business? Any unfinished business? Any other new business?
Yes, as the board may know, our fiscal year end is June 30th, and as we dot Is and cross Ts in pursuit of another perfect audit, we will be in need of a special board meeting right at the end of the month to authorize and finalize the closing of the fiscal year books on June 30th. Given that this year is a little bit different as it relates to my position in that I will not be continuing in Kirtland and revert to my underlying base contract here, I would also ask that you consider doing my performance review and reviewing stepping back into my role here as a part of that meeting. I was hopeful that either on Wednesday the 27th or Thursday the 28th, we could have a meeting to close the books and conduct my performance review. I don't anticipate the meeting would be more than an hour at the most.
I'm good on the 28th.
28th is good for me.
We're talking June.
June 28th, yeah. We have to approve the cash stock.
I'm going to be out of town.
Be away.
You're out of town?
Both days?
Yep.
Okay. So, is that good for you, Mr. Tuttle and Mrs. Roberts?
As of today, it's perfect.
Yep, that's good for me, too.
28th is good?
Yep.
Everybody?
The 28th?
Time?
So can we make it?
Can that available?
Oh, he's out of town.
I'm going to be in DC.
Do we want to try to back it up, or are you gone that whole week?
I'm gone that whole week.
Dan, do you want to do it with four?
I'll yield to the wishes of the board. Certainly with the authorized closing the books, yes. If we can delay, I'll just communicate to the board, the operation has me automatically stepping back into my old contract, so we can defer until all five can meet.
So just do the?
Closing of the books, which is about a 15-minute meeting we could do in the morning as we have done in the past or at the end of the day.
I can do either. Either's fine with me.
So what, the Thursday, I think is the better day for me.
Yeah.
So whatever your pleasure.
Is that 7:45, 8:00 AM? Is that doable?
Let's go 7.
Is it okay with Jenny?
You know how much I love those mornings.
7:30, 7:45 is better for me.
7:30 or 7:45?
7:45 sounded good.
You're pushing it. I gotta work.
That'll work. 7:45 AM on Thursday to 28th.
As long as we keep it short and sweet.
Yes, we will.
I promise I'll be here seconds ahead of time.
Do we want to schedule your review, maybe the following week?
That would be fine if that's possible.
What's the following week look like? Everybody here?
Isn't that the 4th of July?
Yeah, it is.
4th of July. I'll be back the 5th.
Okay, so let's see. So we're talking that following, so you wanted to do it after the 5th, basically, right?
No, the 4th.
After the 4th, you'll be here the 5th? Okay.
Can we do the 5th?
Yeah.
Is everyone available the 5th of July?
I'm not available, but I don't think, you may not need me, so, I'm out of town.
Do we need Bill for this, Dan? Would you prefer it if he is here?
I would encourage you to get input from Bill, whether you do it in writing or some way, I think it's valuable for the two of us to share.
What about the following week on the 12th? 11th or 12th?
Well, we have a board meeting on the 10th, and I believe that's when Bill's performance review is scheduled.
Well, maybe Mary, you could have a phone call with Bill prior to the 5th. Would that be okay?
So we're doing 5th of July, but like 6 o'clock?
PM?
PM. Is that okay? 5:30? What time works for you, Mary, with your schedule?
5:30 is fine.
Okay. I did 5:30.
July 5th at 5:30 okay for everybody?
I might have to go to Florida for a trial, so I don't know. I could do it early in the morning. I know I hate to wake Jenny up.
I can't do that.
But it may go too long for Mary's workday to start.
Early, early morning.
I'm not starting.
Is there another day that week? Well, Ken's out of town until the 4th.
I mean, we can schedule it that day because I won't know, it will be a last-minute thing if you want to schedule it, and I might have to back out, but it is what it is.
So 5:30 on the 5th, and when will you know, Dan? It may not be like till right then.
It could be a few days beforehand.
Okay, so we could reschedule if necessary. Would that be all right?
Yes, and then we'll adjust if schedules conflict. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's Thursday, July 5th at 5:30?
Yes, July 5th, 5:30 to the board office.
Board office?
Yes, board office for both of these meetings, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All right, everybody got that, June 28th at 7:45 AM to close the books, and then July 5th at 5:30 for Dan's evaluation?
Got it.
Okay. All right, any other new business? We're good? All right, second hearing of the public on any item, agenda or otherwise. None? Thank you. No need for executive session tonight, and if there's nothing else, we will, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you.